Along the nose here and the camera's on, so I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee at 6:30 PM on November 5th, 2025. As always, we start with the pledge of allegiance, so you can all join us if you care to. So, the first matter on the agenda is citizens' comments, and as you can see, the room is a little bit fuller than it normally is, and I think that I have two people who are interested in speaking to public comment. I just want to make it clear what public comment is. We have a policy on this. We ask that each person takes three minutes, and you can use the three minutes as you see fit. The policy also asks that we don't hear repetitive information, so if one person is speaking on behalf of one issue and you think that person has covered your sentiment, then you can pull back if you think that that is sufficient. Otherwise, please feel the next person, if you feel free to step forward. When you step forward, can you please just tell us who you are, and then your three minutes will begin? So, our first person is Kevin Kieveney. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Kevin Kieveney, and I am the President of the Neshoba Regional Education Association, and I have prepared a statement for this evening. Dear members of the school committee, in the superintendent's update, he informs all of you that he's exploring options to contract out our food services and extended day programs to private vendors. As President of the NREA, I ask on behalf of our membership that you question the motives of this effort. Why is the superintendent exploring a potential end to a negotiated collective bargaining agreement? Why is the superintendent willing to end a relationship between U N C members and the food services and extended day programs that has been in existence since at least 1994, when we regionalized? What concerns does the superintendent have regarding the food services and extended day programs that would warrant potentially ending our collective bargaining agreement? What steps has the superintendent taken to remediate any concerns he has with the food services and extended day programs other than outsourcing the work of the district? Why is the superintendent exploring the option to stop administering the food services and extended day programs as part of his responsibility? Will this exploration result in a commensurate reduction in pay for staff who administer these programs, including the superintendent? What will be the impact of this exploration on the local community that has provided us the valuable staff members who are employed in the food services and extended day programs? The Neshoba Regional Education Association has always negotiated in good faith with the school committee in all of their collective bargaining agreements. There is a strong, well-established relationship that is now jeopardized by this proposal to explore the outsourcing of the food services and extended day programs. This request by the superintendent to explore the outsourcing of food service and extended day jobs is a short-term proposal with a limited goal of possibly saving a few dollars. This proposal only serves to take away the staff who worked for many years under a fair and negotiated agreement and replace it with an organization or organizations who have no ties to the district and who only serve their bottom line. Please use your power to stop this misguided proposal. It is not right for Neshoba, it is not right for its employees, and it is not right for our community. Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. We have one other person interested in engaging in public comment, Russ Williston. Please let us know who you are and where you live.
I'm Russ Williston. I'm a parent from the district in Lancaster. I want to express my opposition to outsourcing our cafeteria workers and the before and after-school program staff. These are the people who are, these people are part of our community. Many of them are our neighbors and friends. They notice when a child hasn't eaten enough, or is having a tough day, or needs a little extra kindness, and that level of care doesn't come from a contractor. It comes from relationships built over years. Outsourcing might look like a cost savings on paper, but the real cost is in what we lose: stability, continuity, and trust. When turnover goes up, quality and safety goes down. When wages and support are cut, we're sending a message that the people who care for our children every day are replaceable. I don't believe that's who we are as a community. Every morning now, my daughter is getting onto a bus with a "help wanted" banner covering the district name. It would be a shame to see the same thing happen to these two programs once a company with a profit motive tries to squeeze out every dime. A strong school is built on strong relationships, and those relationships begin with the adults our kids see and rely on every day. I'm asking the committee to reject outsourcing and keep these jobs in-house. Our children deserve consistency, compassion, and a sense of community that comes from knowing the people who care for them are valued right here at home. This initiative is D O A. Any resources spent on this are wasted. Commit to setting this initiative aside and let these employees and our district enjoy the holidays. Thank you.
I think that's the end of public comment. All right, thank you, everybody. So, just so that everybody is clear, I know that there are a lot of new members on the school committee right now, so I sent you guys the policy on public comment. I just want to make it clear to you, but also everybody here, that public comment is not an opportunity for discussion or debate, unfortunately, so I just want, I don't want to sound callous as I now move on with the agenda, that's just what has to happen, but we appreciate you voicing your opinions. So, in that vein, everyone, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. It is the consent agenda, and I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda of November 5th, 2025.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you, everyone. So, the next is the school committee chairperson's update. I have nothing beyond the actual agenda, so we're going to move on to, oh my God, sorry, guys. You're all right, need to be somewhere, but I doubt. So, we're going to move on to our favorite part, and that is the student representative report. I'm going to welcome Ryan and Maria to our meeting. Hi, guys.
Thank you. Obviously, there's some bigger things going on, so we'll keep it brief, but the first topic for our student advisory council meeting to the superintendent and the principal was designing and kind of formulating a plan for the time capsule that we're going to leave in the new school to be opened in 50 years by kind of the next generation of Neshoba students, and just kind of what that conversation looked like was we kind of split up into different groups, and people kind of proposed what they want to see in the time capsule. So, an idea that I remember coming up with with my group was handwritten predictions about what we think the world and school will look like in 50 years, so we think that would be something kind of neat for the kids to look at.
Well, my personal favorite was when we, my group and I came up with the idea of politics, of current events that are going on for the future to see, or interviews, so a flash drive of interviews, of videos of the school building, of our teachers, of our students, our staff, and just some interviews of where do you want to be in 50 years, or what's going on right now that's like important to you, relevant to you, that you want people in 50 years to see. So, there was, there was a few things that we discussed, and talked to the superintendent, and we found out the size of the box because we came up with so many things that I don't even know. Yeah, so, those were about it. And then for, so last, October 25th, we had our homecoming, which was really successful. We had roughly two 70 prepaid tickets and then another 200 at the door. It was really good, really good. And coming up, November 21st, we're going to do our Powerpuff.
I take my coaching job on the Powerpuff pretty serious, so I'm definitely looking forward to that. I was just going to give a quick update on the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives and what they're doing. I'm going with a group of four to Elms College in Chicopee on Friday to give a presentation in front of some investors to try to get investments and funds for the next year of the association's kind of efforts and also to grow membership. And just a quick sports update, soccer has their playoff, first playoff game tomorrow. I feel lucky he was playing tonight. I just left, and they were up, I think, 5-0. So, that's all we got.
Good luck to you tomorrow night, Ryan.
Thank you.
Hope you guys kill it. Do we have any questions for the student reps?
How big is the box?
Yeah.
Three by three by five. It's pretty tall.
Hi. Will you, will you tell us what you put in the box?
Oh, yeah. You know, actually, we were going to sort of whittle the list down. Maria and the group are in charge of figuring out what can go in a three by three by five box that will be embedded in a wall somewhere.
Yeah, we have pages of ideas, so.
This is very cool. I love this idea. I'm glad you guys are in charge of it, so thanks for that. Any other questions or comments? All right, so I know that our student reps, Ryan, I think you are able to stick around a little bit. Maria, are you also?
Yeah.
Awesome. So, we have the school improvement plans being presented, so we thought it would be a good idea for them to stay for that at minimum. So, we're going to move on, on the agenda now, to the superintendent's report, and I wonder if, without objection, I could move a few of the announcements around, if it's okay with the committee? Okay. So, and so the order that we're going to go in is we're going to hear a request for proposal with food services and extended day program. Then we will have an honor that we hope to bestow on one of our fantastic students, and then we will hear about the school district calendar, so we're going to go in that order. Okay, so, I'm going to turn it over to Kirk for the superintendent's report and to go in that order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, the committee and everyone that came out tonight. As noted in public speak and also in your report and the meeting materials, we'll be moving to go out for a request for proposal for the two sectors of extended learning and food services. It is an exploration. This is one of those times where, as we have been working hard over the last couple of years to meet the financial constraints that we have in our three towns, there's been conversation happening throughout our three towns around, are you examining all sectors of your organization around the programming in your district and the cost of that programming? And so, without the request for proposals, we don't have a comparison analysis to give to that. So, we really need to do a deep dive into that to understand it, to know it, to know what the story is to tell, and we don't have that today. So, we don't have a recommendation, we don't have any move to, to outsource programs. We have to do this study, and the way that you do that, and the way that you do it in the public eye, is you do it through an RFP process, because the RFP process ensures that any examination you're doing in any of your programs is done under the accordance of those elements. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Mulcaring to describe that process a little bit.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing, and to the school committee, good evening. I know that there's people here and obviously in the district who want to know more about what's happening, so. So, the district will pursue the RFPs, as the superintendent just shared. RFPs allow us to evaluate both qualitative and the financial possibilities and implications with this process. It's different than a typical bid only, where you're just looking for a lowest bidder scenario. With the RFP, it gives us much more flexibility to understand what those options are and what the analysis would be, just like Superintendent Downing said. We've been working with our legal counsel at the onset to understand that, making sure that we're within compliance in that regard. For those of you on the committee who know a little bit about the food service procurement process, as we did that a couple of years ago for the food service director position, so that's very prescriptive with mandated templates and requiring DESI's approval at different steps and certainly at the end, so we'll have to submit our RFP to that office, the Office of Food and Nutrition at DESI, to have their permission to move forward with the different steps along the way. The procurement for potential before and after-school care will have to follow general procurement laws, but we'll still use the RFP process. We'll want to involve our legal counsel on this as well, because it's not prescribed by DESI, but we'll also study how other districts have handled this in the past as well and what the outcomes were for them. So, with both explorations, we'll prioritize understanding what change, if any, there would be on our student experience, the family experience for before and after-school care, and certainly our current employees. In the case of our employees, we do value the good people in both of these programs. We'll enter into both of these processes with the goal of understanding how they can be prioritized in any potential transition along the way. So, the district administration will update the school committee and those potentially impacted employees and families, obviously, on the progress of both these procurements and provide updates along the way.
So, Madam Chair, will you take any questions from the committee on that item?
Any questions? Jillian. So, from your standpoint, is this primarily due diligence, you know, because the towns are asking for it, there's no other impetus, you know, you don't have concerns about performance in the programs?
This is, this is due diligence. We believe in our programs, and we believe in our people and the programs. This is due diligence, and as I reviewed with the town administrators in all three towns, it's exactly what it is, so.
Okay. And my question may be even for Mia, is what is the school committee's role, and new? This is the first time I've actually heard from so many people who I had, like constituents emailing me to be like, "I feel passionately about, you know, the people who serve my kids' food and take care of them before and after school," so people obviously really care about it, and I just wanted to make sure I understand, could the school committee say no if the district came forward and said, "We do want to outsource cafeteria work or before or after-school care"? Yeah, so I'll let Kirk answer it.
Yeah, the role your administration team plays is we provide you with the information and provide you with the options. It's the school committee's role to debate that, to look at that, and make the policy decision moving forward that we would make forward. So, this is not an administrative decision. This is a collective decision of the school committee.
Thank you. And my question is, just to piggyback on Jillian, is this will kind of come out in the budget workshop? Do you expect it will be clear at that point?
Ross?
So, there's a, there's a yes and a no to that question. So, yes, depending upon how far along we are in the process and what financial information we would know and what the possible financial implications are, you know, one of the things that we understand going into this is that we do use, you know, you know, for example, extended learning funds to help offset some of the utility budgets within our schools because of the use of the program. So, there's, there's the yes part of the answer, and then the no would be is if we're not far enough along, we wouldn't know the implication of that. So, I will say it will help the school committee when we revolve, excuse me, when we review the revolving accounts at the end of this month for last year. So, you'll have an understanding of the balances at the beginning, what was brought in for revenue, what that was used for, the offsets that are already planned in the budget that you approved, and then what the final balance was. So, that's part of, I think, helping the school committee with a picture on it.
However, without the offset, like putting the offset aspects aside, food services is a line item in the larger budget document, and so would we be able to do, is that what you're going to be doing with the RFPs to investigate the pros and cons or the cost benefit?
So, there would, there's a financial, when companies, vendors submit responses to requests for proposals, they do it under twofold. One is a non-price, which is the qualitative, which you get to set the criteria and evaluate those criteria. The second one is the, the price. So, that can be considered, but it's not the end-all, be-all of a final decision, if there is any, on that.
Hugging all the time. Any other questions?
Hi. It just occurred to me when I was rereading this and then researching the topic, the way that this is currently written is that we would look at the benefits and implications of having the entirety of a program. Would we ever consider or look at hybrid options?
I guess I would have to know what a hybrid option would look like.
So, currently, our food service, I think, would probably fall under what you're describing as a hybrid. So, we have a food service director that's contracted, right? And along with that comes the menu planning. Again, this is a DESI food and nutrition, sort of like stipulation or guideline. So, along with that comes those, those things, the procurement is done by them, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think to some extent, we're already under that. I don't know if it would make sense to pursue that on the same end with extended learning because we have somebody in place right now. There isn't a lot of oversight of food nutrition mandates or regulations or anything like that that has to do with, with extended learning. It's operated in-house, so we'll certainly keep the idea, the question on the table. I just, my, my first reaction to you is that that probably is not likely a pathway, so. And there's still the pathway to continue with what we have now with our current food service company.
Does, going down this RFP process path obligate us to, to, you know, continue with that if we decide not to?
Nope, not at all. Not at all.
So, the question asked earlier, there's, there's nothing in place in final until the school committee would approve the superintendent to sign the contract?
Any timeline?
I would say on food services, I can get you an easier answer when I reach out to them, probably next week, just to say this is what we're interested in. Typically, those things have to be done by April, but to your point earlier, Madam Chair, about the budget, we'd hope to maybe have that done ahead of that. The extended learning before and after-school care, I'd like to say we can do it quicker than that, but not knowing what the market is on a response, or even having written the RFP yet, I, I wouldn't say that, but I think we would want to put a timeline in so that we have those both, both earlier than that April date, for sure.
I guess one other question, not being familiar with this process, you talked about qualitative and quantitative aspects of the RFP process. With the qualitative aspect of it, how are those criteria set? Like, is it possible, does the school committee have any ability to influence those? And I guess the other part of that question is, you know, could one of those qualitative criteria include something like, you know, retaining a certain number of our existing staff?
Yeah, absolutely. So, that's one of the questions that we are going to be understanding through the process because other districts that have done the food service, which they do have, from my understanding, staff continue with the contract.
So, we could put that in there as consideration?
Yeah, I've heard assumption of assuming, I've heard models of assuming salary structures as well.
Considering the timeline is not ideal with regard to our budget cycle because the regional system has to submit middle March, is this something that you could be planning, maybe rolling out, not next year, but the year after? Is that also on the table?
So, FY '28?
I know that, that prices shift and change, but...
Yeah, I, I think, yes, we, we could do that. I don't know if we could do it this year for FY '28, for the very reason that you're saying, that uncertainty around fiscal components. I don't know if a company would be willing to sign a contract for FY '28 that far ahead because models on, things change.
I'm just saying that the timing's not great.
Yeah, I think one of the first, the first things we need to get back to the school committee with, and obviously, you know, our folks as well, is what does the timeline look like now, so.
Any other questions or guidance? I would say that my final comment is that qualitative aspects are hard to quantify by nature, and so, knowing who's in the room and understanding how important you are, you are to the district, that's hard to put on paper, the value that is brought. So, that will certainly be at the forefront of our minds as we move forward. I know that we are all under a good deal of pressure to bring the budget number down. We are under enormous stress constantly to do that. All of us are, in our homes and at the municipal level, at the national level, so that is also a pressure, but that I don't think counts the plan, the more important aspects, which is bringing a program to our kids than does, is top-notch, I should say, yes.
We agree.
I know you do, yeah. I appreciate that, you saying that. All right, guys, so if that's, if there's nothing more on that issue, I'm going to move to the agenda. And that brings us to another element of the superintendent's report. And so, Kirk, I think we're going to move now to a slight, a small, an amazing honor for one of our students, and so we have something, if anybody wants to leave, I, I am not going to be offended if you want to, but we welcome everyone to stay if you would like. We're going to do a little honor now, and we don't want the two to overlap, so feel free to stay or leave as much as you can.
Thank you.
All right, everybody. So, Shonda cracked the window for us, hopefully. It's okay, hanging in there. Okay, I know this building is so old. So, everybody, we're going to move to a celebratory moment in our agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to Kirk.
Well, I am going to call Albany's family up to the table if they don't mind.
Awesome.
So, um, as you know, as your superintendent, I'm also a member of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. And every year, superintendents cross Commonwealth and out awards to our well-deserving students who meet the criteria of excellence in their school districts according to the MASSS criteria. So I have a statement here, I want to read it aloud, Sarah, so if you don't mind me embarrassing it. So, um, "The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents award for academic excellence as an annual award given to high school seniors who excel in the classroom and make positive contributions in the community. As superintendent, I have the privilege to award Sarah Albany's this award. Guidance counselor Katherine Kai-Kemble has written on behalf of the Neshoba Regional High School educators the following acknowledgement of Sarah's accomplishments. Sarah Albany's has excelled in some of our most rigorous courses, dedicating herself to hard work, collaboration, and a commitment to learning. Her powerful communication and leadership skills are evident, both on the ice hockey rink where she mentors young players and leads with confidence, and in the robotics club where she guides her team with strategy and vision. Her creativity and learner's mindset extend beyond the classroom as she dedicates her spare time to writing a book as well as projects as crochet origami and art. With empathy and a global perspective, she also gives back to the community through her volunteer work at the library and local food drives. Today, we celebrate a student who embodies perseverance, creativity, empathy, communication, cultural competence, and a true love of learning, a remarkable student in every sense." And so, as I may read, "This certificate of academic excellence is presented to Sarah Albany's. Having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded this certificate of academic excellence. In witness word of the seal of association and signature of the superintendent's schools are herein to fix. Your Superintendent, Mr. Kirk Downey." Congratulations, and congratulations to you both.
Congratulations.
If you guys will come on over here and, Sarah, this is for you as well.
Oh, yeah.
And come out to have your coat worn later. So please, right here. Dr. Boynton, please.
Kate, come in here.
You're welcome to, but by all means, you don't need to stay for our business unless it interests you.
I'll send it to Dr. Boynton.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I have college jobs to write. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations. I appreciate it. Take your flowers. Oh! Well, that is a nice meeting up, and I appreciate that. So thank you for sharing that great honor with us. Uh, so we have our next item of the superintendent announcements, and that is the school district calendar. Uh, it's not completely ready, fully baked. Kirk is going to share progress.
Yeah, and I just want to, want to have some discussion with the committee to get some feedback. Um, so currently, we're developing our calendar recommendation for FY '27 school year. We're a couple months early on that for good reasons. At the end of the 2027, fiscal '27 school year, deconstruction of the current high school will begin. So we need to maximize.
What year is June 2027?
June of 2027. So we need to maximize quite literally every minute that we can in the summer of 2027 to get that done. And so in looking at this year's school calendar and looking at some of the complexities we have to address, I want to bring that forward to you. And then also collect some feedback from the committee around early release dates and how we're currently utilizing them and some of the things that, that we have questions about. Um, so with that, what would be necessary, I see that the calendar has been pulled up. Would you mind zooming in just sort of into the August month a little bit? In order to, or actually, go to June first.
June of '27?
Yeah, go all the way, just scroll down to June. There we go. So this is actually the key time. We need to start as early as we can in June in order to get the process going, deconstructing sections of the building that will allow us to put in the next section of parking and those things to open up the school for the next fall. Um, working with Dr. Boynton and her team, we're going to be working with the finals schedule at the end of the year, when seniors has gone, are gone as well, to section students and section portions of the building is, it's, it's the, I don't even, what do we call that section of the building, Kate? It's where the library and?
Yeah, where the academic.
Social studies rooms and science rooms below. That section that's closest to the project obviously is the first part that would be torn down. So by doing some work there, we'll be able to reposition, reassign where maybe some finals classes happen. So we begin the abatement process in that section so that deconstruction can begin as soon as we're out of the building. Then, as you, as you are deconstructing one part of the building, you're abating other parts and you, you work your way down the building till ultimately the building will be fully demolished and removed by about mid-October is what the plan looks like today. So we need to maximize every minute we can in that summer. And so under the proposal that you'll receive at the next meeting, uh, the end date would be June 9th if there were no school days. The purple days are, um, the, that's finals week at the high school. So in order to do that, now we can go to August, in order to do that, we would want to start school a week earlier than our typical pattern. Our typical pattern is students report the Wednesday before Labor Day. Well, as our luck would have it, timing, I guess, would have it, luck hasn't had anything to do with it, I guess. Labor Day of '27 is September 7th, the latest date that it can be, which means school would start, um, on the 2nd, thus pushing the end of the school year down to the 16th, possibly the 24th. So if we start a week earlier, um, we're able to gain five days there. Uh, and just because of where we fall in the calendar year, it's actually only one calendar date earlier than what we did this year.
Yeah.
As a result. So it's not going to be a dramatic shortening of the summer by any stretch. And the year after, it's going to be quite a lengthy summer, actually, um, as a result of that. So that's one factor. The other factor I wanted to share with the committee is that it will be an off-cycle election year, uh, and including the state primaries that are set for September 1st as well as the national elections that will be happening in November. And so applying the strategy that you approved in the previous calendar where we had this, we would utilize the September 1st date as the professional development date for the school district. That helps us because then we don't have to cancel school, thus adding another day to the calendar, thus less time to do the deconstruction of the, the high school that summer. So we would move what is typically our professional development day in March to September 1st. So faculty and staff are in session, students are not. Um, and knowing that we have some complications, particularly in the town of Stowe around that matter, we've already, you know, we devise our activities in the other locations so as not to disturb that election process. And then you would see on November 3rd, Tuesday, November 3rd, we would move our conference times to those days, designating November 3rd as the day when we do remote conferences over Zoom. So that we are not bringing traffic into the schools where voting is happening and, and we can, you know, section off where those locations are. We've done this, this model work while the last time we had to do this cycle. So that's the biggest factors there. The last piece that I wanted to talk about, and then the other colors of the calendar just reflect what is the typical pattern of the calendar when we have, uh, you know, government holidays and things of that nature. Currently, um, on the calendar where you see, um, like on, oh, excuse me, this isn't the, the correct one. This is a model that expresses the early release periods on Wednesdays. It's currently Fridays. And some things that we've discovered in doing data analysis on student attendance, and as you know, we've talked about the importance of student attendance, which we're tracking well. I checked it today in Neshoba, we're having attendance rate of 96.2% today, so that's good. It's one-tenth higher than previous. So we're tracking well on our attendance, but it's something we always want to monitor. On those early release Fridays, we are seeing an increase, sometimes in some locations, double the number of absences than on an average school day on those Fridays. Uh, one of the interesting things to note in particular is that when we do the conferences in March for K-8, the high school is still in session. And on the Thursday, when we have an early release compared to the next week when we do the Friday, the Thursday is half the rate of the Friday. And with Neshoba Regional High School not having those early release dates, their absentee rate is almost double on that Friday when the rest of the district is, uh, on an early release than typical. So it does present the idea of, does our structure, the way we build our calendar, um, not encourage, but at least provide an opportunity where, where people are more likely to bring their kids out of school? I can't answer that question definitively, but the data suggests that early releases on Fridays could potentially meet that point. The, we don't have comparative analysis of that data going back to the last time it was on, um, Wednesdays years ago, I believe. Uh, it goes back to 2011. We just have those moments when we've done them on Thursdays due to conferences. So that's the, the debate that we've been having, that's a debate that went to the calendar committee. And just looking for some feedback from this group prior to us bringing forward recommendations at the next meeting, and we certainly can bring two calendars that show the Wednesdays and the Fridays, um, as, as the best days to do our early release professional development. So that was a lot to talk about calendar, but we're looking for some guidance on that before we formally bring you the calendar.
And you're going to hope to bring it to us on the 19th?
19.
And have a vote early December?
And then we would have a vote at the meeting after that. So there's two more meetings we're going to be bringing this to.
What questions do you have?
I think the only thing I would say, because I imagine that it came up in the calendar committee too, is I know for people who, you know, do sort of traditional office work in a hybrid setting, Friday is often a work from home day, which may make childcare easier if the child is, you know, adolescent, 1215 as opposed to, you know, 305. That's sort of my only thought around Fridays maybe being a little bit easier, particularly for parents with elementary school age kids.
When was the last time we had the Wednesdays, what year was that?
I believe it was 2011. Mr. Kevaney, is that about right?
That sounds about right.
2011 or thereabouts.
Yeah.
I think it was proposed once before since I've been on the committee, and it was right before I joined the committee, and it was really not long received then, but that's all I remember about it. But I share the same concern with feeling that the Fridays tend to overlap with people working on a hybrid schedule, tend to be a couple Fridays. And then the other question is related to, um, the September 1st full day for professional development. Was any consideration given to stacking that in the week of August 24th? So that it would, you would have the three days of professional development?
If we did that, it would extend the school year another day.
Yeah.
And we're trying to capture as many days as possible because let's say I put it in on the 26th, we would not be able to have school on September 1st because we'd have to avail the Stowe schools to the town of Stowe to vote that day.
I missed that. Sorry. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jackie.
My reasoning for asking was, one of the things that had come up in the equity audit as like a thing that we're doing well is closing the gap on attendance. So based on the current model, there's a lot of different factors that go into great attendance. So I just, that's where my head was going, was if, if it's getting better, why change it? I don't know. Is it getting better? Overall, attendance is getting better.
Uh, it's getting better post-COVID. Um, I, I don't think there's any question about that. Um, if, this is a community values judgment. Like, do we want to build a calendar that encourages going to school or gives opportunities where maybe, because the, the data doesn't lie, the absent rates go up on, on Fridays, on early release days, more than on Fridays that are not early release days. So that's a question for the committee to consider. And I, I hear the, there are seven of them, right? So those are seven days throughout the year. So it comes down to the, a value judgment from this committee about, we're, we're happy to bring two forward, um, but it comes down to, do we build, because sometimes it's our practices, sometimes it's our structures that assist or impede. And so if our early release days are discouraging attendance, it's, from a policy setting standpoint, it's our responsibility from policy setting to, to ensure that we're doing right by what we're supposed to do.
Because it has to be either or. I mean, if you're, you could have a Tuesday conference day, a Wednesday conference day, a Thursday conference day, and a Friday conference day. I mean, you could put it all over the week. It doesn't always have to be Friday, always have to be Wednesday. So, I mean, I don't, I don't particularly have a point of view on that particular issue. Like, it could work, it sounds like either way has its pros and cons, and I think the rest of the committee needs to weigh in on that particular issue. Um, I do have some other, I'd like to sneak Amy for asking about the September 1st issue because I have similar concerns there. And by the way, I love the orange. It's really easy to find in those days. So you say even closing, um, the first week in June, if there's still going to be deconstructing through October?
Oh, yeah.
Makes the question, why even bother closing then if we're already running into the school year? Alternatively, why not close six or seven weeks earlier? You know, start the next school year in July, and then you can have all the work done to fully go to school. I mean, I, I'm, just help me understand why closing earlier is necessary if there's still any destruction with school starts?
Yeah. I think the objective is to do as least amount of disruption to the regular routine that people have in their community as possible. So that's the general idea there. Uh, and other factors, we do have an agreement that we would start school no earlier than, uh, one week prior than this current agreement. That's actually in our contracted agreement with both of our bargaining units. And the third piece is, we don't need to get the whole building deconstructed in order to move into the new building. We just need the significant portion that's in the plan to be deconstructed in order for the parking and roadway structures in the places that need to go into place. So, um, working with our design team, the construction team, with the OPM, um, that's going to give them ample time to do those things and to be prepared for September 1st.
Yeah, there is a clause too in the current contract that's under like extraordinary circumstances like construction, that we could have that start date change. The other piece too is, it would be the impact on the community, but it's also the impact on our school community and that you have educators who are in spaces and having to move things. So I think having that flexibility is kind of nice. So I think having that flexibility is kind of nice.
Any other comments or questions?
Can I just say, not necessarily for our family, but for multiple families. I know a lot of crazy sports schedules, tournaments on the weekends. You know, where sometimes, you know, I've had many families who say, oh, thank God we have a half-day on Friday. We can travel to, you know, wherever they need to go for a tournament that starts on Saturday. You know, in addition to that, I think too, like, on a half-day, if we're going away as a family for the weekend, it's nice to say, oh, we've got a, we've got a half-day on Friday, like, we can get on the road early. And it encourages people to be away together possibly. So I think it works better this way versus having it in the middle of the week where you're just kind of scratching your head and trying to find something for your kids to do.
Julie?
I just wanted to say, I love the early June end date. Even though I will not be impacted by the high school construction and I live fairly far away, my kids are not there, I think that sounds fabulous.
What if we have really a lot of snow days or something like that?
Yeah, it's a great question because when we did the modeling with the construction team, we modeled out with the five snow days. So we built, so in their schedule, they're building their schedule off of having those five snow days.
So you'll be under a lot of pressure not to call snow days most likely.
Well, everyone thinks I am already. But the fact of the matter is, we call it snow days for one simple reason, safety. And if our roads are able to be cleared and normal traffic can go, we have school.
Any other comments or considerations you'd like to put on the table?
Well, I'd just like to observe, I don't know that it's obvious yet to the administration, what the committee's preferences.
I'm looking for some guidance.
So I think we need to do some sort of poll as far as this whole Friday, early Friday, whenever the rate is early release days, to get them more guidance.
Say you're going to bring both?
Happy to bring both. Happy to bring both.
What do you guys think about him? Crap, sorry, there you go. Your color coding skills are amazing.
Okay, that's Jess.
Jess is all over it. Jess, great job, Jess.
I'm glad you like the orange.
Would you guys like to see both?
I'd almost like to see three because I like the idea of not going all-in on Friday or Wednesday, potential hybrid.
Wednesday and Friday. To really test the theory.
Two of two. Then you'd have some data on if this actually does impact attendance the way you think it does.
Ms. Park, you're on that committee. Wasn't there some conversation about testing a model where there are some Wednesdays and Fridays?
There was. Three versions.
I'll try not to screw it up.
I mean, there's certain things that we see, like the Friday before Martin Luther King holiday. Tends to be a popular day for people to hit the road and not go to school that Friday. Our absenteeism is about 10% that day.
So we'll leave that one Wednesday.
So there, so, you know, we could build a model that's based upon that.
Any other thoughts, revisions?
I just have a question. Was there any, I know this is, I don't know how well this will be received, this question, but was there any discussion about the breaks? February break, April break?
Giving them up?
Yeah.
No, there's been no discussion.
Yeah, that's not something that happens in other states.
I know. That's why I'm asking.
No, no, there was none.
Okay, next.
This is why I like to remind the committee that they set the calendar.
One more observation though is that, you know, the administration is putting together a calendar based on our preferences. I don't think we've clearly articulated data for preferences to maximize attendance or to maximize family convenience at all meetings.
I thought that might be what I was saying.
Well, but if, you know, for doing this alternative version where summer Wednesdays and summer Fridays, what should be prioritizing when they identify which Fridays and which Wednesdays?
So Tom, would you like to cover that?
No.
Oh, I think that Kirk said he's going to try to strategically choose which ones will be Wednesday. I think it's actually a great opportunity to test the theory, to see if attendance does actually settle out.
And I mean, I guess my preference is really just making it as easy for families to cover childcare. And I guess that was really my biggest thing, as someone who's always trying to cover childcare.
Well, I would want us to to think about the academic impact for the high schoolers and like the timing of, I know that some of the, as some teachers do make really strategic decisions around when they have certain tests and how to prepping students. I don't want to make it too challenging for the calendar committee, but I do have, I guess, some thought there around like making drastic changes. I guess we would know ahead of time anyway, so they could plan around that, but.
Making drastic changes what?
Like playing around with the days and when, what, like just picking, like, I'm going to say the Wednesday before Martin Luther King Day, you know, that kind of thing. But they would know ahead of time if they were going to add in anything academic.
And the high school half-days, all the blocks meet.
Yeah, that's true.
And so they just shrink them down to this really interesting amount of time. Am I right, guys? Half-days in the high school are 24-minute classes.
Just to touch that.
At least from like the student perspective, there's no really different one in the classroom, whether it's like Wednesday or Friday, once you're actually there. Like, I think whenever the half-day is, it's just going to be a half-day. And just kind of go about it. So it's like, and I think when the teachers are at least told in advance, they just kind of plan around that. So they're not like, like changing will be like a crazy impact whether it's for any levels.
Any other thoughts? So good luck. Thank you, Sharon, for representing the committee and to all the people who sit on the committee doing the hard work. This is always a surprisingly complex task.
So to be clear, our committee, we've done the airwork. We're just down to isolating the half-days. So I am looking for direction on what we want to see and if we bring the calendars forward at the next meeting.
So you're going to give us one version with Fridays?
Okay.
One version with Wednesdays. And there are seven, you said, right? And then the other version, you toss the coin, three versus four, on Wednesday versus Friday?
That won't be hard, just because we broke down the last two years of attendance days on those Fridays. So we can see like which ones peak the most.
Okay, is that good?
You bet.
Can I ask a question? Since it's, it sounds like there's a lot of hesitance to change the Friday early release day. Maybe we put together two proposals, one which is with the Fridays and one with Wednesdays and Fridays?
That's what she said.
Well, right, so she's saying no Wednesday-only version.
No, I just, I mean, well, Wednesday-only one is already completed, so I guess it's no more work. I was just thinking, if that one is not, it doesn't seem like that one is something that the committee is really interested in, so why have that third option? That was my question. But it is already created, so.
So we'll keep it as an option solely because of the work needed? I'm interested.
Our feelings won't be hurt.
I'm interested in hearing from the communities. So if anybody's listening out there, please let us know what your preference is. You can shoot us all an email. You can land a public comment, of course, at the next meeting, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we wouldn't be doing, again, our due diligence if we didn't show, present this to you and let you know that there is impact on the days that you set your early releases.
All right, guys, we're going to move the agenda to update on strategic work. Kirk, this is still your show, so.
Yeah, the school improvement plans will be coming in new business, so we'll just move on to that. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Two pre- decided updates this evening. One is just to elevate approval. Thank you. That was in your meeting materials, approval of two grants to support our strategic efforts. Both of the grant submissions for approval to you were intended to support our real-world and connected learning. Both were competitive state grants. So the first one was Neshoba Regional High School was awarded a $50,000 Innovation Pathways Implementation and Support Grant, which was announced during the state celebration during STEM Week. Neshoba was acknowledged at that time. This funding will continue to support the development of our Innovation Pathways programming, including our curriculum work across all three pathways, field experiences, and access to advanced coursework for our students and support for the funding in part for Innovation Pathways Coordinator. And then the second grant that Neshoba was awarded was the Skills Capital Technology and Equipment Grant in the amount of $96,425. That one was supported through the Executive Office of Education. This grant will fund new equipment and technology upgrades to strengthen hands-on learning with updated and advanced technology. And we are very pleased to share that all of this new equipment will find its way into our brand-new building.
Yes.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent.
The second.
Why don't you go ahead and move to the second?
The second update is an overview of our professional development that occurs during our full day of professional development in March, but also during our early release days throughout the year. And we had our first district-wide early release on October 24th, where all of our faculty and staff took part in our first early release professional development session of the year, marking the beginning of the full year of learning during early releases for our community. Each session in this year's calendar is designed in the hopes to advance our strategic efforts while also supporting the unique needs of our grade spans and our specific disciplines. Of note, we're pleased to share that we had nearly 20 teacher facilitators leading professional learning across K-8, helping to build coherence and shared ownership of curriculum implementation. In K-3, our teams are focused on structured literacy through our PRISM grant and our PRISM partnership, and continuing to delve into our all-block curriculum in grade three through five, while our middle school teams are engaged in professional learning with their Java likes relative to specific components within their content areas. And at the high school, our department heads are leading curriculum work and deeper learning work, including two departmental book studies. Our specialized groups, such as our counselors, nurses, and student service staff, are also using this time to strengthen our systems, our programs, and our protocols and strengthening their knowledge around evidence-based practices. And so we have included the overview for the committee and our community so awareness hyperlinked into the update as well.
Concluding report this week.
All right. Thank you for that, everyone. Any questions on the remaining items there with the strategic work? All right, so we're going to keep moving the agenda here to new business. We have a couple of items. The first one, very exciting, is the introduction of our school improvement plan.
Great. Madam Chair, I would like to bring forward our five principals, Mr. George Bates, Mr. Sean Sheen, Mr. Scott Blanchard, Mr. Karen Carpenter, Mr. Kyle Grady, and Dr. Kate Boyden. This is our annual school improvement plan presentation to the school committee to show you the work that has been done thus far this year. The school improvement plans are a device of the school and through the work of the school council, the principal takes guidance and advice from their school councils, where they collectively come together on what is the plan. So the way this typically goes is the principal is working through the administrative work that we do that starts in summer at our retreat. Because we look at our strategic plans. We bring forward these items to our school committees, of which then they debate and ask questions and drill down to help inform the plan and ensure that indeed we are aligned to our strategic work as we move forward.
The school councils.
School councils, as the committee, forgive me. And so tonight, I welcome our team. Thank you for coming. And I'm turning it over to Mr. Bates.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight our school improvement plans. My colleagues and I appreciate this chance to outline the comprehensive work that's underway across our district to ensure continuous growth and success for each and every one of our students. Forget what I just said. I'll start over.
We're all visual learners.
Yeah, we're just kind of, we gotta go to.
Can the slide is down?
Yeah, we gotta go to the PDF version. We're having technical issues. So we'll scroll as opposed to turning the pages on that.
Yeah, your amazing transitions will be observed later.
Just edit this out.
All right.
Hey, there's 25 people watching live.
All right, so let's rewind and start again. Principal Bates.
All right. Well, once again, thank you very much for having us here. We are excited to share the work that we are proposing for your consideration to outline the comprehensive work that's underway across our district to ensure continuous growth and success for each and every one of our learners. Tonight, our presentation will highlight the specific goals and ongoing initiatives for both our pre-K-8 schools as well as Neshoba Regional High School. These plans are aligned with the broader NRSD strategic plan and focus on critical areas that we will highlight for you. We look forward to reviewing this work with you and hearing your feedback. And with that, I will turn it over to my colleague, Principal of Hale Millsville, Kai Grady.
Thanks, Principal Bates. Alida, would you mind going to slide three?
Oh.
So what you see here is just a visual representation of how our goals are similar in each of our schools and towns. With the exception here of high school, you can see it's pre-pre-K-8. So it just, it demonstrates that there is some horizontal alignment between the schools. And also, if you see in the middle of the puzzle piece there, there's the NRSD strategic plan. So again, it's just a representation that those four goals are derived from the strategic plan. So there is a vertical alignment as well as a horizontal alignment between the K-8 schools. Alida, would you mind going to the next slide? What you're going to see here is a little bit more fine detail about each of the four goals. I'll go ahead and just quickly touch on goal one before I pass it to Principal Blanchard. We made some significant progress in goal one since we last presented before this group. A couple, but not an exclusive list, a couple noteworthy items is a considerable overhaul of our grade reports in kindergarten, kindergarten through eighth grade. Also, we've solicited quite a bit of feedback from our families around our communication. And with your help, we have implemented some communication policies and expectations for all NRSD employees. Looking ahead and what you can glean here from what's under goal one is that we need to educate our parent base on how to read and understand how these changes have affected the report cards in elementary and middle school and to kind of have some agreement and understanding between our staff and our parents when those go home. And we will continue to survey our families after our fall conferences and move forward with some recommendations on possible enhancement changes that we might see in the future for our conference model. Let's talk a little about goal two. I won't pass it over to Principal Blanchard.
Thank you, Principal Grady. Our second goal is aligned with strategic initiative two, to develop professional learning community cultures across all schools, departments, and grade levels. This goal has remained the central focus of each school's improvement plan with an emphasis on building collective efficacy and deepening our team's collaboration around student learning. Across our schools, grade-level teams are consistently engaging with the four essential questions that guide the PLC work, which are, what do we expect our students to know and be able to do? How will we know if they've learned it? How will we respond when they haven't learned it? And how will we enrich and deepen the learning for those who have demonstrated mastery? These questions, paired with the three big ideas of a PLC, which are a focus on student learning, collaborative culture, and collective responsibility, are becoming increasingly evident in our meetings with teacher teams. Over the past year, we've established essential standards in ELA and math that serve as the foundation for our guaranteed and viable curriculum. This in turn supports our district's commitment to equity by ensuring that all students, regardless of their school or grade level, have access to the same priority learning standards, learning outcomes, and instructional expectations. learning outcomes, and instructional expectations. We continue to strengthen our ability to use the data from our universal screeners and our curriculum-based measures to identify specific learning needs and to provide targeted Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. Our efforts are further supported by the professional development we are receiving through Crafting Minds and through the ongoing work of our instructional coaches, both of which continue to help us deepen and refine our instructional practices. Our partnership with Solution Tree continues to provide us with valuable individualized coaching to support our efforts in cultivating effective PLC cultures within our buildings. Additionally, district and school-based learning walks have strengthened our shared understanding of effective instruction, and we're now exploring ways to expand these opportunities by facilitating learning walks for teachers across grade levels. As a result, we now have a strong foundation within our PLCs that includes the structures and systems that are in place, that we can now build upon as we refine our practice and increase our collective efficacy as we work to ensure positive outcomes for each and every student. And with that, I'll hand it over to Principal O'Shea to talk about goal three.
Good evening. I'd like to talk about goal three, which is our work to integrate social-emotional learning practices into daily instruction and student life. Last year, we built a strong foundation with our building-based equity teams getting established, the addition of middle-school advisory curriculum, and the calm compassionate teaching. This year, we're looking to expand and continue that foundational work that's been developed in the past couple of years. One area of change and alignment is with the middle-school advisory programs. The middle schools are transitioning to using school links, which will replace the MEFA program. This creates a direct pipeline with the high school. It means our middle schools are now on the same career and college readiness pathway that they'll continue when they get to Nishoba, giving them an opportunity for a stronger sense of where they're headed. The schoolings program helps students learn about their strengths and their areas of interest. In addition, it provides lessons that go beyond pathway exploration into topics such as managing emotions, goal setting, and practicing self-control. And all of the work they do in school links stays with them right through the high school so that they're able to help choose their best path for themselves. Continuing with the middle-school advisory program, we'll be looking at the curriculums that we use in our schools this year to ensure its effectiveness, and we're gonna be gathering some feedback from the teachers and students and make adjustments if needed. A new action step in the school improvement plans this year for the three middle schools is implementing the No Place for Hate program. We're all building on Hale's successful use of the program. The student-led initiative from the Anti-Defamation League empowers students to create a more inclusive school climate through school-wide activities that address bias and promote respect for all the members of the community. On our building base, also our building-based equity teams are actively in practice now, and they're examining data and developing specific strategies to implement within the building. And staff also continue to participate in district-level workshops with Dr. Warner, which helps them come back and inform the local work at each school. So the work of goal three is about building sustainable systems and a culture where every student feels they belong, know their strengths, and has supports to persevere through challenges, both in school and beyond. With that, I will turn it over to Principal Carpenter.
Good evening. I'm going to speak about goal four, which is focusing on safety across our schools. Goal four is to continuously review, adjust, and evolve our safety practices in alignment with both our district expectations and best practices from the local safety organizations. We're building from a strong foundation. We currently have established practices for regular safety drills and communication for unification protocols and the active use of our Raptor system across all schools. We're also already engaging with safety committees in each of our schools in monthly meetings and working to build collaboration with our local first responders. Our desired state is to move from these good practices to next practices. We want to ensure that all of our protocols are implemented with a hundred percent fidelity and that we're strengthening our partnerships with the local police and fire departments so that they're more integrated into all of the decision-making pieces. To achieve this over the coming school year, our action plan is very focused and clear. We're going to continue to practice our Alice protocols at each of our schools, and we're going to systematically collect the data and feedback after our drills. The data will be analyzed in our school safety committee meetings so that we can make immediate and practical adjustments to our procedures. Finally, we're gonna increase our direct involvement with local first responders, ensuring that they're present not just for consultation, but to be active partners in our drills, and most importantly, the debrief sessions that follow our drills. Evidence of our success will be clear. We'll have detailed drill logs, committee minutes showing data-driven changes, and documented feedback from our first responder partners. This year's goal really represents our priority, which is ensuring our student safety across the district. It's our number-one goal. Going to the high school.
Thank you, Principal Carpenter, and thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to present to you this evening. The high school is kind of its own entity. However, you will see some through-lines that carry over from the K-8 to the high school. The high school has a revised school improvement plan, which is aligned with our Niasq priority areas, which were identified during our collaborative, prior to our self-study, as well as the collaborative conference visit last spring. The themes are ensuring coherent curriculum and instruction that's aligned to the Portrait of a Nishoba Graduate competencies, continuing to build systems of support, MTSS to meet all of our students' needs, strengthening our collaborative professional culture through professional learning communities and shared leadership, and then preparing for the new high school building as catalyst for innovation and deeper learning. The plan includes four interconnected goals that will guide our work through at least the spring of 2027, which is when our decennial visit will take place with Niasq and likely beyond. So the idea is that we are making progress towards these identified goals. Niasq comes in the spring of '27, and then we move forward, continuing on any further areas. There are through-lines that have also carried over from our prior school improvement plans. So goal one is around engagement, belonging, and Portrait of a Nishoba Graduate, and the goal is to strengthen student engagement, continuing on that path, as well as strengthening belonging and integration of our Portrait of a Nishoba Graduate competencies more fully into instruction and school culture. Some key actions in that goal include launching School Link, which is a connection to our middle schools, a student experience tracker that connects Portrait of a Nishoba Graduate artifacts to college and careers planning. To continue, our Innovation Pathways expansion, to offer authentic, hands-on learning opportunities, maintaining a laser focus on classroom engagement in our instructional areas, as well as enhancing student voice through instructional shifts using our, in meeting with our student advisory group, as well as the building-based equity team. And then our shift from guidance to a counseling model that ensures more proactive, student-centered support and contact with our counselors. In goal two, it centers around curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and the goal is to develop and implement a fully-aligned, standards-based, viable curriculum with equitable access to programs and pathways for each and every student. Some key actions in this goal are to continue our partnership with DESI's Kaleidoscope Initiative for Deeper Learning, and to continue to expand district-wide and building-wide learning walks to strengthen shared instructional practice. Our department heads will be leading those with our teachers as well. Also, to begin implementing common assessments and integrate high-quality instructional materials, HQIM, across disciplines, which we have begun with our integration of next-generation science standards, as well as illustrative math in Algebra I thus far. Also, our math and social studies departments are launching book studies focused on inquiry-based learning, and we are expanding our dual enrollment opportunities with Middlesex Community College to offer higher-level course offerings for all students beyond advanced placement. Goal three is centered around equity and multi-tiered systems of support, and the goal is to create equitable access to advanced coursework and ensure a robust MTSS frameworks for all students. Some key actions are to continue to refine our staff process for student support and intervention, and using data to determine which interventions are working, to implement a co-teaching model in core content areas, in particular at grades nine and ten, and provide related professional learning to co-teaching, continuing to conduct leveling audits to remove barriers to advanced coursework for all of our students. We are looking to expand on the K-8 MTSS handbook to create a comprehensive high school handbook that's centered around MTSS, as well as PLC structures, to support data-driven collaboration. And to help with that work, we have a design cohort participating in a DESI-sponsored MTSS training series to align our supports and structures. And then finally, our last goal is on collaboration, schedule redesign, and new building readiness. And the goal is to build a culture of collaboration through professional learning communities at the high school, and to prepare for a redesigned schedule aligned with the new high school facility and use of the new building. Some key actions continue with that design schedule team and the DESI cohort to explore flexible scheduling and support models, to train the instructional leadership team in all departments and PLC at-work structures and data inquiry cycles for implementation, and then provide professional learning for building readiness, including use of innovation spaces, flexible spaces, technology, and safety protocols for our new building. We're headed into a new realm at the high school, so change is pretty exciting, and as we prepare for the opening of the new building in 2027. So thank you so much for allowing us to present, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Principal Bates.
I'd just simply say thank you again for the opportunity. We really do appreciate both our process and collaborating together and the leadership from our district leaders, and we think it makes for stronger school improvement plans and certainly better-aligned plans. And we're happy to entertain any questions you might have.
So just from a procedural standpoint, is there something that we will vote to approve at the next meeting?
We'll come on the agenda next week, next meeting.
By law, the high school school improvement plan is actually the one we need to approve, but Kirk always likes to bring it together as a team because it is also interconnected. So if there's any feedback or questions that you have or want clarified, this is the time I can open up now.
First off, you know, obviously a lot of work, and I'm gonna give a more nitpicky link. In reading through these, preparing for the meeting, it's very acronym-filled, and you don't explain what acronyms are, and Pong took me a ridiculous amount of time to figure out what it's called.
I thought I wrote it in there, Portrait of a Nishoba Graduate.
Oh, no, I got there in there.
I am happy to add that.
But maybe make a little acronym expansion to help make it more accessible.
So I'm struggling with how to articulate this particular thought, but I think it's great that the schools are working together to come up with goals they have in common, but it begs the question, to the extent that the different schools have different strengths and weaknesses, are they not also have some different goals to address those weaknesses?
Well, that's why we have a strategic plan, right? So that's why we came together five years ago to build, which is what guides the work that we're doing. I would agree with you. One thing that is common is we want to see improvement in student growth across all schools. And so the baseline work, the foundational work that they're talking about in these goals, supports that underlying principle of advancing learning in schools. The nuanced element to that is that the challenges that, say, our three elementary principals have in order to reach those goals are independent of the schools. Those are the operational steps that they're taking locally at their buildings to reach those benchmarks. So I agree with you that the challenges are different, but ultimately, the goal is common for us to reach. And so they have latitude in terms of what they're doing in their school buildings to do that. So for instance, we have an aligned schedule across the district for basic principles that allow us to do the PLC work that we want to do. The principals apply their academic schedule against that common planning time schedule in a way that best meets the needs of their school. So that's one example of this.
Because there are some resources that are shared across the facebooks.
Correct.
What are there?
I think Sean, if my ignorance is going to show, because I don't know if they're both middle school or high school, but the middle school transition to school links to align with the NRHS pathway, could you just, to Shannon's point, just explain it for someone who doesn't know, be familiar with the concepts?
So in past years, we were using a program from the state called MEFA, where students would go on and take assessments or surveys and so on to figure out areas of interest, possible, like eventually, career paths.
Okay.
And they could even dig around about colleges and amounts, salaries, and things like that. It was a little clunky, but what has come, the high school did a large study and found school links as a better alternative, and not just for them to use, but it transfers to us. So students can do some of that work at the middle-school advisory, and then it transitions into like picking courses from eighth grade to high school. And it's essentially, I don't wanna call it a portfolio, but it goes right up through high school, and eventually, I believe, it can be used for like college recommendations. So there's this longitudinal, you know, and students can see how their interests have changed over time, so it's a program.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Does this link with Naviance?
So I'm happy to expand. This will, as of next year, take the place of Naviance.
Do you have a plan for the kids to transition who are younger?
We do, and we've been implementing, actually, starting this fall with our grades nine, ten, and eleven. We're not touching our twelfth graders, who are fully embedded in Naviance, and that's it. So I have to give a shout-out to our counseling department, and in particular, to Jerry Specht for taking the lead on this. It ultimately is going to be pretty amazing because the students will come with them following their wolf tracks, and to be able to create a curated eight-to-nine, you know, middle-to-high school plan, exploring their interests, and in sort of, you know, inventories and careers, and the platform is very user-friendly for students. There's a parent component, too, that we'll be rolling out for families, so you'll be able to see that. And then, once they reach high school, it's really robust post-secondary planning, allowing students to curate and really individualize that plan and document within a portfolio. And that plan, we're calling Wolf Tracks to align with our Nishoba Wolf, which is great. And then, yes, our teachers will be trained on this as well, because this is where the college recommendations and Naviance just has not kept up with the times. And this is a platform that, once you see it, your mind's gonna be blown because it's amazing. And so Naviance has phased out as of, you know, this year with our seniors. Ryan, you're the graduating class with Naviance, and then phased in with Maria's graduating class, and it's pretty incredible.
And just because the door got opened a little bit there, something that we've talked about regularly is the transition from eight to nine, and the role that parents play in helping their kids choose classes. And so do you imagine that as that parent component of schoolings comes on board, that parents will then be invited into that process?
Oh, yes. Yep.
Did one of you guys sit on the school council to help form this? I can't remember who your friend was.
No, Ava. Ava was on both. Yeah. But I did, I have a really robust bunch of students on my current school council, and this was shared, obviously, the school improvement plan was shared at my first meeting in early October, so.
Do you guys have any thoughts on the school improvement plan that you, like, do anything keep your interest, or have any question in your mind?
I don't know. Yeah, if I had anything else.
Hearing about the school links is making me a little jealous.
I'm right there with you. Having had two kids who miss Naviance, that was changing.
We will get to use it. Your sister.
Yep.
I have a question about one of the goals. So I didn't know that you guys were reshaping your student school improvement plan to meet Niasq.
It's a requirement.
Okay. And so you said that this, these goals are gonna live for two years?
Or longer, but we have to be prepared for Niasq to come visit. It's a two-year timeframe from when they visit in the spring. They visited in the spring of '25. They will come back in the spring of 2027 for the decennial. It's a three-day accreditation visit, and we're required to have an improvement plan that addresses the areas of focus, and then when they return, what have we done for those areas of focus?
Okay. And then I guess my real question is about goal number two for the high school, so this is obviously near and dear to my heart. I talk about it endlessly. Support and inspire learners through aligned curricula and equitable assessments. And I guess, Ryan and Maria, you could weigh in on this too if you want to. So this is kind of the meat and potatoes of public schooling. It's, you know, what are we going to teach kids? How are we going to teach them? And then how do we know that they learned the thing we wanted them to learn? So that's your goal number two, is huge? Huge. So.
Indeed.
Right? And your goals are never uninspired, or, and you guys never lack some serious aggression in laying these things down. I salute you. How do you know when this is happening? How do you know that your educators are actually living the curriculum documents and engaging in inquiry-based instruction and not just lecturing and multiple choice questioning kids?
I think that, if I may answer, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ryan and Maria. It comes with our presence in the classroom and those luring walks. That's really having presence in the classroom and then providing that feedback and then using our leadership team as well to continue to move that needle and insist on change, right? That is...
I'm going to add as well, you're going to see a competency determination policy that comes forward in December, and in the competency determination policy, we have to have common assessments across those key courses to demonstrate competency. And so that's going to be a great tool for us to utilize across courses and across the school.
So I'm all for consistency, but whenever I hear common assessments, I think that the default setting is a gigantic multiple choice test. So that is not, I hope, where we're heading?
And the way the competency determination language works is it's common assessments, projects.
Portfolio.
Portfolio. So it's, exactly.
Do you guys hear what I'm saying to our high school reps? Do you hear what I'm saying?
Yes. I think just one example of that, of like kind of goal to an action, was on one of our student advisory council meetings, which we had dedicated to talking about learning styles in the classroom and teaching, and different ways of teaching. So we talked, each student kind of talked about like how their preferences with like the A P classes, how they're consistent with one another, how certain teachers would assign a test, but for every one test they assign, they also assign like a different type of work or project or something like that. And especially in that group in particular, all the students know that nothing like they say or any opinions they express or any like drugs are taken outside of that group in like a negative fashion if they don't want to. So I think having that is definitely a big part in kind of measuring and getting real student kind of input in that regard.
I also think we can add the teacher-to-student relationship, so we can just go and talk to a teacher. And majority of, I mean, I could say for myself, majority of my teachers are excellent, and I know a lot of them have been really flexible with me in multiple situations. So I think that really adds to it too.
So I would agree. I think that we have fabulous educators. I think the systems are what I'm more concerned about, and I know that there is push at the top level for this to happen. So I'm happy to see it eventually move out through the classrooms and then create consistency across teachers, because it's also important for equity. And I look forward to the N I S process. What role does the school committee play in that?
At the decennial visit, there is a meeting time for school committee members to meet with the decennial visit. Unlike the collaborative conference, which is really more digging into school days, there's time and space for district level and school committee participation, parent participation, which happened the last time as well, student participation in N I S. So they want pretty much all stakeholders.
Yeah.
I think my comment, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment on the school improvement plan process and how it works, because I don't know if there's a way for us to incorporate feedback on the school improvement plan into the process, where we get an update on some of the evidence of the effectiveness of school improvement plans. When I look at the plans, I see that there's, each one of these plans has a category called Evidence of Effectiveness, and there's, in some of the plans, it's, I think it's interpreted as showing how you're going to be effective with the goal that's listed, and in some of them, it's showing examples of evidence of effectiveness of each goal. But I think we're now in a process of having multi-year plans, and for the way that, I guess my brain works, I would almost like to see a category that shows what progress has been made in year one towards evidence of effectiveness towards the goal, and then what remains to be done. Because right now, it's kind of hard to parse out, and I think I always struggle with trying to understand how, you know, we have these school improvement plans each year, and they are really well thought out, and they're ambitious, and I just have a hard time understanding what we said we were going to do last year versus what we're saying we're going to do this year.
If I may?
Please.
That's the oversight of the superintendent. So I'm the one that's responsible for doing that. That's not the committee's responsibility. The committee's responsibility is around ensuring that the plans that are being brought forward to you are matching what our district bands are. You've hired me then to make sure they're doing it, and through our supervision and evaluation processes, those are the things that we specifically do. So that's how it becomes operational to the district.
Do you, we used to do thought exchanges. When do you accept parent feedback? Like, you are going to share with us?
You're going to get that on the nineteenth. Ms. Handman, who's actually here tonight, she's going to be joining us at our nineteenth meeting, and we're going to talk about the feedback loops and the surrogates.
Okay. So that we understand when, as parents, we weigh in on the experience. Because I think that there is a consistent tension, just for anybody who cares about public policy here. There is a consistent tension where a school committee body is asked to approve something, and then we like set the ball rolling, but we're not there when the ball comes in. And so that is a tension, because we're approving something and then we're trusting that the thing is happening. We're trusting our professionals, we're trusting our superintendents, that that thing's happening. So I think that it always consistently comes back to Kirk saying, you can evaluate me on it.
That's right. Because that's the operational aspect of the issue.
And because all the school improvement plans are plugged into the strategic plan and Kirk's evaluation is the strategic plan, it is interconnected in a way that it never used to be. And so there is so much more synergy in the process. So.
But just on that note, I have to say, I'm redacting thoughts from my head through confidentiality purposes.
Good luck.
We had a fabulous one on Tuesday at the high school with myself, Dr. Boynton, and Mr. Rosia joined us for this particular walk, and Assistant Superintendent Freddie. And so we took our, in order to use our look-through documents and calibrate with ourselves, instructional practice and the evidence that we're seeing according to the performance tables. And so those are not evaluative conversations, we don't go back to faculty and staff, because what we're doing is tuning our thoughts, our analysis, and also tuning up, how do we offer good productive feedback to our faculty and staff around those practices? So those are the things that we do, that like I said, I redact a lot of thinking in there just because we want to protect those practices, because we, our educators are amazingly welcoming when we go on these walks, and we want to protect that. So that's just one example of how we look at the types of things that are in school improvement plans and how they are happening pragmatically in these schools.
No, I appreciate that it's all tied into the strategic plan, and then we can evaluate you based on the evidence you provide the school committee from probably all the stuff that's built into these plans. But I was making notes as these were being presented, and I think that the more that that can get embodied, embedded into these documents, the more useful it will be for the school committee and its review of them.
At the eval stage?
Like the high school, I like how the high school plan kind of points out the steps that have been taken, showing the evidence of what's been done related to each goal. It's just helpful to see, okay, these are the steps that were taken, as opposed to like how they're going, how the effectiveness is going to be demonstrated.
So we did that, so last year, we had our meeting to come back and do a revisit to the plans, and that's what that meeting is intended to do. And why we do that is to come specifically back to show that. So we'll keep that in mind as we look to those moments.
Any other questions or comments?
Could the second part of that be to, as part of the evidence that we review in the evaluation process, be specific to these, some of these? Tangibles, right? Like things that we say, okay, we did, you did this in conjunction with you, and here's how we show that.
Yeah. Like, what is the deliverable? And it's ultimately evidence that Kirk puts in his evaluation.
Correct.
So, any other questions or comments? All right. We appreciate your time, your energy, all your hard work.
Appreciate you, thank you for the opportunity.
Seemingly endless, thank you guys. So guys, we have what appears to be just one more item on the agenda formally here, and that is a new job description called the Student Services Coordinator. And for those who don't know, the school committee is responsible by law for approving any job description that is new and by our policy. So, hi guys, I'm Maria Baudin. Thank you. So we have to approve any change to a job description. So Kirk has a proposal for the committee. Kirk has already asked the Personnel Subcommittee to address this because that is where these things are supposed to generate. And so I'll let Kirk set it up, but we'll also hear from the Personnel Subcommittee.
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
We're a little bit, I want to invite our Director of Student Services, Maria De Manche, to the table, and I'll just set it up for her. We finally placed this position today, not because we planned to. We did have a resignation, our Director of Early Childhood took a position in another district. And so we have posted for a replacement already, and that posting is currently running. What it does is it gives us an opportunity right now to examine closely the work, and so Mr. Manche is here today because, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, it is in our policy group. We, as an administration, don't make arbitrary changes to job descriptions. We bring them to the committee for approval, particularly when there's a change in title and to a compensation. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Manche.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Good evening, school committee. You know, I'm happy to be here to talk a little bit about this, but also recognize that it's not probably the best opportunity to bring a new job description in November. We unfortunately did lose our current Director of Early Childhood, Kristen Ryan, to another position. But it afforded us the opportunity to really examine the current job description and really take the feedback around, since I've started, from the community, from families, from staff, to really explore what would be accurate job description for the position that this particular role holds. So I took the opportunity to create this job description. It is a new titled position, and the new title is Student Service Coordinator. You have this in your packet, and it clearly outlines, or I believe more clearly outlines the position responsibilities under this position. This position would not only entitle these responsibilities, but this particular job description is centered around the preschool, early childhood, so preschool and kindergarten. And this would be a more accurate description of the position that we're looking to hire currently. So I welcome any questions about that.
I will just add on to that, we have a new, sorry, I lost my train of thought. This particular job description, I believe, it's not the same work, but in terms of the weight of the work lines up with what assistant principal responsibilities would be, so we would put it on the assistant principal scale, which is a range of 115 to 138. So because we are in a situation where we need to make a hire, typically what we would do is present this job description and put it in the consent agenda for the next meeting, but we need to be expeditious in searching for the candidate, so we're looking for a vote this evening.
Can you tell us what the current ranges, so that we understand the fiscal implication of?
The current.
I believe the current range on that position right now is 115 to 128, isn't it?
No. The salary band for assistant principals is 115 to 138. We didn't have a salary band for a specific director title in the bands.
That's right, because we used the curriculum director bandwidth last time, which was the, what was that, the one, that's the 115 to 138.
I can check that really quickly.
But, I mean, what you're saying here is that this is not necessarily a huge fiscal shift.
Correct.
But that it is more a philosophical shift in what you're going to be looking for the position to do.
Well, I'm going to poke fun at myself for a minute, is I brought the Director of Early Childhood position to the committee. If you remember, that was during the transition time, when the superintendent had a short window to imitate a special education director at the time. Ms. Manche is in here now, she understands, knows the work, knows what needs to be done, and so I think the job description best matches what that looks like.
So I think Scott Man was up first.
So I'd just like to know why we think someone needs a master's degree to do this job?
So the work that sits in front of this position really is someone that has to sit and make decisions on a regular basis around the needs of really diverse students and students that come in with very intensive needs. And they need to be able not only navigate those needs, but they need to be able to make decisions that align with potentially bringing in some resources to support those students. So you really are looking for someone that has a deep experience and level of education that can make those decisions on a regular basis, and not someone that might have a limited experience under a bachelor's degree. They really need to understand the work that sits in front of them to make those decisions on a regular basis.
I also believe in, please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Murdock, to obtain your administrative license, you have to have your master's degree to demonstrate that through the licensing department for DESI.
Right. Knowledge might be a little out of date, it might be a mistake, but I think there are other criteria besides a bachelor's degree that you could use to satisfy that.
That's why I'm deferring to Ms. Murdock, but they have to be able to demonstrate and complete their competencies in those tasks. So for instance, the P A L S tasks that are required for licensure for the administrator in Massachusetts are a requirement, and those exist within master degree programs.
Yeah. To get this, our patient may have a master's degree period.
Correct.
That's probably the best reason. But I like your answer a lot. Thanks for having me. What other questions do we have?
It was just more specifically related than the conversation that we had when we met with this personnel. We talked about this particular position was specifically for early childhood and putting some language in there that it was, you were looking for someone with those requirements but with expertise with early childhood. And I thought that you said that you were going to put a line in there that said, focus on early childhood or something to that effect. Is it in there, and I missed it?
No.
It's in, if you recall from our conversation that we had a missed one. We, that... It's in, if you recall from our conversation that we had, Ms. Blinett, that will exist in posting. So it's the posting of the coordinator for the early childhood role, because this applies to the duties that's assigned by that. So that's how we gather specific folks to early childhood.
But this position is specific to early childhood?
Yes.
K2 or pre-K2?
Yes.
Five?
No, it's, 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 it's pre-K to K.
Pre-K and K.
Oh.
Yeah.
The position covers the IEP responsibilities for kindergarten.
Not pre-K?
Yes, all of pre-K. But that, the position for pre-K not only does the IEP responsibilities, the programmatic responsibilities on developing the preschool model based on student needs, dealing with all of the lottery and students coming in, and in addition to parent professional development groups.
So why did you decide to leave it out of the job description?
I think what it does is, as you know, we updated the policy on that, that going to the committee every time you change a line or a different thing in the policy can be, can slow the work down, works down considerably. So let's make sure we write a job description that is encompassing, and we apply the utility of that job description, then if there's changes to it, or if there's other applications in the future, it's already there.
Checking.
I was going to say the same thing, because I would have never put this together with that position, based on how I'm reading this. This is a coordinator position, and then you're serving as the LEA, and that's a huge responsibility. So I understand, like, to your question about the master's degree and the relevant experience, but there's also more direct services supported by the previous position, that then are we backfilling that? That's the part that I'm not seeing in this, and I...
What services?
Um, I call it fun stuff. There's a lot of fun stuff, right? This feels very administration-heavy, whereas some of the roles and responsibilities that, this is Ryan, may look different.
Can you give an example of something that is not in this, that the previous position was doing?
Ms. Manch.
Yeah, so maybe some clarification on that. And it may seem administratively heavy, and this was based on some of the feedback, to be transparent about that, what the role is, because the role is very administrative-heavy. There is a lot of management around preschool, the program development, running of the IEPs, managing the entire IEP system, evaluating the preschool staff, hiring the preschool as well. The fun stuff is a lot of the, what we have, we have a early childhood grant, and so that's the fun stuff. So she was responsible for applying for that grant, but we have others that administer, go through the process of, a kind of, she oversaw pieces of it, but we have other people in the day-to-day activities, running our town playgroups, doing our parent, like the mommy and me groups, the fair. Those are all run by the grant. And those are, that's a little bit of a separate task. She did the administrative part by writing the grant, but the implementation is actually other people that still maintain that responsibility.
Thank you. Yeah. So, yeah, we are looking for a motion, and I wonder if Amy has the guts to do it here? Let's see. Question us.
Madam Chair.
Oh, question?
We did vet this with the Personnel Subcommittee. Did they want to solicit their feedback?
So Sharon, your committee, oh, Robyn's the chair, it's here. Sorry, Sharon.
Sharon shines.
Robyn's taking the reins. So Chair, Paulina.
Yes, no, as Sharon said, I mean, we talked about it at length, and we got our questions answered. So I think the Personnel Committee is supportive of approval of the job description.
And we don't normally rush to vote on things in one meeting, but we are going to do that now just because of the urgency of the matter. Okay?
Okay. I move to approve the job description for Student Services Coordinator. That's included with the meeting materials.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right. So, guys, have it. Thank you very much for that. So guys, we're going to move the agenda one more time, and that is to, we have no unfinished business, but we're going to ask the Subcommittee if there's any other share-ups you'd like to bring before.
School building committee, November 20th. No real information.
And November 20th, just as a reminder, is when we will be viewing the cost-benefit analysis for the...
No, the topic will be solar. There won't be a cost-benefit analysis at that meeting.
Do you know when we're going to build on that?
That's a good question. It'll be a couple months down the road from that. There are some steps that have to be done before that, that the Chair will bring forward to that committee at the next meeting.
Excellent. So there's time. Any other stuff to move forward on?
We met with Superintendent Downing and Assistant Superintendent Fred. We will be meeting again on the count to finalize the documents for the school committee's review on the 19th.
Excellent. Anything else?
Communication Subcommittee met, and we'll be looking to invite Superintendent Downing and possibly Miss Penn again to an upcoming meeting, so we can talk about survey data and our recommendations and suggestions. So we bring you to the...
And remind us what the survey was?
Communication survey on the school committee website, and its effectiveness and possible ways of reorganizing it.
All right. Thank you. All right, everybody. So items for next agenda. If you guys can see, is that working now? Oh, I ran out of any. Oh, no. Do you want to send the cord over to me? Want me to drive?
It didn't work. Lost the juice, did you?
Yep. It's been a long day. We have some security measures to respect here. So guys, here you have the parking lot. These are things that Kirk and I will try to work into the agenda, the future agendas. Obviously, we're heading toward budget season, so time is getting kind of gobbled up by other things. But here we have the 19th.
May I address one?
Yeah.
On the parking lot?
Sure.
Is that, once we're done with our graduation requirements and competency determination work, after the first of the year, I'll be taking a policy Subcommittee. We need to have a conversation around use of district branding, mascots, those types of things, for groups that request the use of our colors and our logos and such.
One million dollars.
So I'll DM you right away.
I'll talk with Dr. Reinhardt about getting that on the agenda after January 1st.
Okay. So here are the other things that we have. A B C update is mandated by rule?
Yeah. And I have an upcoming board meeting. I have not received the A B C update yet, so we hope to have them on that meeting.
Okay.
And that opening, just so the committee knows, the opening update is always an update on the general programming of A B C and the types of things that they offer.
Anything that you want to see added to the parking lot or to our next agenda? All right, as always, you can email me if something comes to mind. I know it's been a long day for everybody. I appreciate your time. You're doing okay. I'm going to move to a jerk. You got it. Nice try, Sharon. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, everybody. Have a good night. Any questions?